Ted Delisi, you are an old, old, old friend. And you have been a longtime, very successful Republican strategist, consultant.
Don't know about that.
Lobbyist. Well, that's the word on the street.
Okay.
And I'm really, really happy to have you on the podcast because we haven't had, you know, it's been a while, but we've tried to get somebody who kind of knows sort of the inside story about what's going on. The audience, listeners and viewers really are, when they ask questions, are always wanting to know more.
Right.
And I'm finding that the more I do, the more they, they want to know more about what's going on over at the Capitol. And I think with just also national politics and state politics right now.
We're about to have the intersection of both, I think.
It is so, it's very confusing for these, for folks and, and I use my parents as an example. They're almost 90 years old. So they call me every day trying to find out, okay, what does that mean? I'm like, okay, well, sometimes I can answer the question. Sometimes it's kind of a guess, but we're in the first called special session here in Texas. And I wanted to get your thoughts on a couple of things. You know, the, the three, there's a bunch of issues on the call.
Sure.
But the big three that I see that sort of need to occur because of certain, a lot of different pressures was disaster preparedness was one. Redistricting and the THC.
Yeah.
And the THC issue is really because Lieutenant Governor Patrick pushed so hard last session. I don't think it would be a, it, it would be a priority. It would be, they would be working on it, but it wouldn't be the way it is now.
That's right.
And so, you know, I get asked and I, I'd love your, your thoughts on it. I get asked all the time if things are going to get done this, this special in this 30 days. We're two and a half weeks away from the end of this special.
Right.
And I say, no. That's not a big.
Well, I think we might want to just take one of those one at a time. I mean, I think maybe first, you know, first Frank, I think it's probably just worth saying, you know, that this is Governor Abbott's ninth special session. Right? So it's not a, it's, it's not a particularly rare event to have a special session. You know, Perry was governor for 14 years and called 12 special sessions.
Yeah.
I think, I think three or four of those were for school finance only.
Yeah.
Back in the time, we were just kind of stuck in that rut on school finance and, and ultimately got something. And I think this is one in which you could at least see the potential. I mean, how about this, see the potential for another special session if we don't get anything done? I mean, what is sort of interesting to me a little bit, and maybe we start with redistricting.
Yeah.
Is, you know, for those of us that, you know, sort of suffered through redistricting, you know, I worked on the legislative redistricting or that LRB when Cornyn in 2001 was doing it.
Okay.
And so I've got some, I've, I've got some scars. Yeah, some scar tissue or whatever. But look, I mean, I think it was, you know, and then we have done mid decade redistricting before, right? And that was, you know, Tom DeLay was in town and this is a different circumstance. The largest Republican delegation in the country is from Texas. So the biggest group of Republicans essentially is from Texas. And, you know, I, we've obviously heard, you know, I think this administration talk about, you know, we want five new seats.
Right.
I have sort of been told reliably that there is, we haven't seen a map yet, right?
No.
And so let's just sort of like, I think theoretically, just kind of like look around the corner and be like, what would it, you know, what would it look like? Right?
Yeah.
Obviously there's been some conversation about, you know, I think the history of redistricting is really like, if you can draw a majority more minority seat, you must draw a majority minority seat. Right? So for people out there being like, now what's this jargon? Like it means that, you know, there is some law, case law, DOJ pre clearance. These are all things that the feds were sort of looking over Texas's shoulder about how you run your elections and how you draw maps, right? Some of that has been, you know, some of sort of the time of that has sort of expired. And there is some legal interpretation. I think we're going to hear some testimony about what is the legal obligation? Regardless, this map ends up in court.
Okay.
Right? There's, so regardless. One of the things that's out there that I always like to say when I talk about redistricting is that redistricting is a movie, not a snapshot. Okay? And, and so what that means is, for example, in 2001, the legislature hadn't drawn a map. It went to the legislative redistricting board, which is, you know, five people made up, not the governor, interestingly enough, but five statewide elected officials. I guess the speaker's on it, but he's not statewide and elected.
Right.
And, and at the time, there was a lot of pressure on that legislative redistricting board to draw a map that would elect the first Republican speaker, right? And ended up being Tom Craddock in 2002.
Yeah.
But I think that Travis County had six seats. Okay. Six state reps. And there was a lot of pressure to maximize Republican gains. Okay? Three of those Republican seats were drawn to elect a Republican. And at the time that was maybe Terry Keel, Jack Stick and Todd Baxter.
Okay.
Right? I'm not mistaken.
No, you're right. You're, you're right.
And a few years later, do you know how many Republicans there were in Travis County? Zero.
Zero.
Zero. Because the movie, number one, you probably drew those districts based upon Bush's 98 numbers.
Right.
Which were pretty robust back in the time.
They were. They were very much.
Very robust. And
Particularly minority voters voting for Republican.
Well, and I think, you know, you had Bush, I think you had Bush cross, you had a lot of independents and Democrats that liked Bush. You know, he really ran up the score in that, in that 98 race against Gary Morrow. Not just outspend him a gazillion to one, but just, you know, he was on the way to running a campaign for president. I mean, that was, I mean, the kind of, kind of a, the cloud around him had all kinds of star, star power around it. I know it makes it sound like we're old, Frank, because we are old.
We are. Yeah. When you said 2002, like, whoa, wow.
That's right. But the reason I think to sort of keep things in mind is that it is, you know, if you're going to draw maps based upon Trump's most recent presidential election and that election result isn't as durable as you think. Now, you know, particularly in places like South Texas, right? I mean, there's a lot of press around Starr County and what happened in Starr County and, and what happened to younger voters. By the way, those things happen nationally, right? They didn't just happen in Texas, you know, minority voters across the country, younger voters across the country propelled Trump to, to his election. But I'm just saying that you have to sort of have a little bit of caution when you draw maps not to overreach. And, you know, just to sort of kind of understand kind of where we are, you know, the sixth year of a presidency, it hasn't been particularly generous to the incumbent party, right?
Right.
You know, so that would mean, you know, that would mean, you know, something like Bush in 2006 losing 30 seats.
Yeah.
President Eisenhower, sixth year into his term, leading, losing 48 seats, right? Obama losing 13 seats. You know, Reagan in 96 only losing four seats in the house. So it's all over the ballpark, but you know,
Traditionally.
If you added up all those together and averaged them, you'd say, you know, the average loss of an incumbent president in the sixth year of their term is like 20 seats.
Yeah.
Right?
That's right.
So just to say that Texas will make the difference in, in the house may not be true. You know, there are weird elections, you know, in 1998, President Clinton managed to eke out a gain of four seats. That was kind of right after the, the impeachment stuff with Clinton. He kind of turned it around on him. I don't know if you remember that or not.
I do. Yeah.
Weird cycle, weird election night here. So.
Probably one of the few peoples that could turn that.
Yeah. And it was just, I just think it was.
Let's go to your overreach problem.
Yeah. It was after, you know, 94, I think Republicans had won a gazillion seats. So maybe there was some kind of regress to the mean there, but,
Yeah.
But I'm just saying that, you know, there's one thing is like we, you know, and I understand that, you know, the country's deeply divided. I do think we're going to do a new map. I do think that there's going to be lots of conversation. You know, I would just say, when you draw maps, be aware of the law of unintended consequences and realize that it's not about what the map is today. It's where the movie is going, right? And so if you're Chip Roy or Michael McCall or Dan Crenshaw or Pete Sessions or Craig Goldman, you know, I, I, I think you gotta really look at your district and maybe ask yourself, hey, where are they? Where, where's that district headed? Not just where it is right now, especially if you have incumbents who'd like to serve for longer than a little while.
Yeah. I, I know those are such a great point. You know, when you said the durability of the last election cycle, that really hits home because I think that's the, that's really the, the crux of a lot of it is yes, that was unprecedented. And there were so many other factors involved in, and I have this conversation with people all the time because there, there are people that voted for Trump that don't like Trump, right? I mean, they, you know, that's, I mean, that's not a, that's, I'm not telling anything that everybody doesn't know. But there are, there, the only other option they had was something they just couldn't live with.
Yeah.
So, but now you're, now you're moving towards, you know, an election cycle where you're going to be talking about, you know, new issues. Those people didn't, didn't necessarily give up their one card and grab a Republican card.
Right.
You know, how do you, how do you put those people in a district that, that they're going to be?
Yeah. I mean, it's, 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 I mean, look, I mean, I, I'm not naive to the influence of this president. I mean, I, I think that if the White House says this is the map that I think is going to further the agenda, I'm not expecting a lot of Republicans to jump in front of that train and say like, don't, don't pass this map. In fact, I'm expecting people to be like, you know, I'm, I'm signed up. I'm ready to go, right?
Yeah.
All I'm trying to say is that for those people who have spent a lot of time looking at, drawing that and sort of watching the political ramifications of the map, you can draw a district that you think does one thing and realize that it doesn't do that thing. That's it. That's the, that's the point. And I'm just, and I'm saying that, you know, sometimes when redistricting was happening, I would, you know, if I was visiting with an incumbent and they're like, oh, you know, I'm getting this new area. I was like, get a big, get a big old Diet Coke and start driving it.
Yeah.
What is it? Is it, are there new apartments going in there? Is it, you know, kind of undeveloped land and they're going to put, you know, some new homes there, some starter homes there? Like what's there? Like what is it? A developed neighborhood? Is it, you know, what is it? Like, cause if you, a lot of these state reps, they won their races by walking their districts. And they've got a really good sense of like, I'm in this neighborhood. What's the vibe here? Like particularly, I think state house, state senators, maybe not as much, but like a lot of these state house races or state house candidates and incumbents, you know, you put them in a truck and drive them around a new area, you know, they've got a pretty good idea of, of what's going on. You know, these congressmen, you know, look, I mean, if it, if it works and, you know, I think the margins effectively 220 to 215 in Congress right now. And we have, I mean, I think there's probably a couple more seats in, in Texas. Five seats sounds really aggressive. And then the question here is, maybe I've got some 53, 47 incumbent seats. And, you know, you gotta kind of watch what the weather looks like and be, be aware and conscious of the law of unintended consequences.
Yeah. And, 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 and of course, you know, you, you said it, retail politics is really the, it's still.
Yeah.
You gotta, you can't get away from that. I was watching, I was looking at an article today and I, I noticed that there's a lot of developments going up for new housing, but they're all rental homes. They're not, they're not for purchase. And I thought, that's really going to skew things oddly because people that are, that are mobile and moving in and out of these places, you know, who knows? First of all, where they, where they're coming from, you know, how are they going to vote while they're in that? And then they're going to move, they may move on. So I, I'm wondering, and maybe you'll know better because you've done this. How deep can you dive and, and figure out what the constituency is in those particular districts? Or is it a little bit of a toss up towards the last 20% or so?
You know, the technology is, the technology is remarkable, really, honestly. I mean, I think in some ways, if you were to sort of like, and, and there's, there's lots of people, I mean, we could go over to the LBJ school and sort of dry out on like whether redistricting and the technology behind redistricting is good. Because redistricting is about, by and large, it's about drawing districts to protect incumbents.
Yeah.
I mean, that's really, that's, that's, you know, I mean, if you were to put it on a bumper sticker and say, what is, what's it about? You know, it's about politicians choosing their voters. And then every two years it's about voters choosing their politicians, right? So once a decade, it's about politicians choosing their voters. And, and so, you know, the first rule is to, you know, sort of, I think, protect incumbents. And when you're in a fast growing state like Texas, you know, the question, this is a kind of a weird story. You know, I was, as you might imagine, working for Cornyn all those years ago, I was involved in, you know, the litigation that came from, from those lawsuits. And Cornyn's first assistant attorney general was a guy named Andy Taylor, you know, great lawyer, great guy. And he was in front of some federal judges and was asked, because you, you know, you, you, you can't draw, the legislature doesn't draw congressional maps. It goes straight to the courts. It doesn't go to this weird star chamber of the legislative redistricting board. And so one of the judges asked Andy Taylor, you know, during the course of the litigation, well, can you just draw a least change map? You know, where it's like, well, I don't, you know, and.
Like keep it generally the same.
Well, I mean, that's the great, and so, you know, Andy being the good lawyer that he was for the state of Texas was like, your honor, I'm sure I can, I can absolutely draw you the least change map. And, and then, you know, I don't think I was in the room, but I, I know he called me afterwards. And it was, and I was like, least change how? We've got, we've got new seats. Where do you want to put them? Right? Cause once you put one seat here, it kind of ripples across the state and you, it's kind of like, you know, districts are like Jell-O. Like if you moved it, like there, it's gonna move, it's gonna change because you've got new seats. It's gonna change because population moves, right? So least change how? Do you want the numbers of the districts to stay the same? Like what? And so there's lots of things about redistricting that reflects, you know, every decade that reflects population change. You know, the state is collapsing up and down the I-35 in South Texas and in Houston, right?
Well, that's true.
So, you know, places that are not, you know, places, you know, like Big Spring that were the same population in 1950 as they were in 2000, right? Well, that's not keeping up, right? And in places, you know, in the metroplex that are growing like a weed, that's where new seats are going to be. So this is all sort of a reflection of the state. And you can't really draw maps without understanding that it all ends up in court. And what I would say to incumbents or to political watchers is typically when we do redistricting, the primaries slip. And that's something that I'm not, you know, you have to start saying to yourself, okay, you're not going to have a primary in early March potentially. You might have a primary in May. You might have a primary in June. You might have a runoff later, you know, 10 weeks later. So if you're running for statewide office, what does that look like? How does that change your strategy? If you're John Cornyn or Ken Paxton, how does that change your strategy?
That's a great point, Ted.
That's historically what's happening. There's no guarantee.
Cause it moves because you, until the court doesn't come up with a decision, you can't, you can't have your primary.
So I just think if you're sort of looking at the map, you're sort of planning, you know, like, you know, if you're, if you think you're going to have, or you're, you know, you're, it, it may not be done, primaries may not be done in March. And I would say if we draw maps, it would be unlikely that it wouldn't move. Or maybe you say it would likely to move.
Yeah, likely. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I also think that, that people believe that there is sort of, like you said, a star chamber where all this is done. And that's just, that's just not true. I mean, there, there's, there's work being done behind, obviously there's people working on these maps and
Right.
It's a very complex issue. I mean, I've seen some of those readouts and makes it looks like, it just looks like code.
Yeah. The technology is such that, you know, I mean, there was a, there, there's going to be questions about how Republican my district is. And the question is, well, which races do you want to look at? Right? Our friend Mike Basley has created the Orvis number to kind of figure out how Republican districts are. It's a good, it's a, it's a good mathematical equation to sort of figure out what the baseline number is. It's not infallible, but it's a good baseline to understand things. And I, I would just say that, you know, this is going to be one, I mean, and to say, you know, you're trying to predict what the weather is in November of next year. And you have a lot of different variables associated with that. Redistricting is obviously being closely watched by this administration.
Yeah.
And I think it's probably, you know, how you draw it, what the final product looks like. Phil King in the Senate has drawn maps before. He's a veteran of this process. He was very involved in mid decade redistricting in 2005. So you're getting people that know what they're doing. Todd Hunter in the house knows what he's doing. Can't see how he wouldn't be involved. But there's a lot, there's a, like I said, there's a, it's not a snapshot. It's a movie and you gotta be careful where the movie's going.
That's, that's a great point, you know, and also, you know, I, I think you're also just, and this would be more on the, on the drama side of things, but just trying to get it done, you know, you talk about timing and, you know, there's already a lot of talk about how the Democrats may walk, you know, to break a quorum and all those. I, I've, I've been around long enough, you've been around long enough that we've seen that done twice.
Yeah.
Once they went to New Mexico, once they went to Oklahoma.
Ardmore, Oklahoma. Yeah. That's right.
I, I remember it very well. And, you know, I mean, it works for a while, but what it does is delay things.
Right.
Even further back so that you have, it, it, it's a problem. It's a problem for the primary.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't know whether or not, I hear that Hakeem Jeffries is going to be here.
Right.
Next week, I think, maybe, walking around the Capitol. I don't know how.
It's sort of, it's sort of funny because, you know, the, really the congressmen don't really care about Austin.
No.
Right? And then usually every 10 years, but obviously differently, you know, they care a whole lot. So and, you know, there are, you know, there are, there are some members of the legislature who are now congressmen, Mark Vici, you know,
Yeah, that's right.
Craig Goldman was a lawmaker here in Austin before he went to Congress. So look, I, I think that there's some interesting things that have to play out here, but what I would say overall is the fact that you are now in the part of a national debate about who controls power. And so, you know, the, what happens in X, Y, in X, Y, Z part of Waco, you know, there are a lot of eyes looking at what the Lone Star State does and eyes of other states, other blue states who might feel the need to sort of counteract what we're going to do here. I'm not really sure. I think we've heard other states talk about.
We've heard about it. I've never seen anybody take any action on it, but I'm surprised they haven't, honestly.
Well, and maybe they're actually waiting to see if, you know, kind of like if this, if, you know, if this plane gets off the ground in any sort of meaningful way here, probably, you know, I don't, I don't know.
That's true. I mean, if we can't come up with five and we only can come up with three or something, I mean, they are, are they, it doesn't look like there's five viable new seats. I mean, maybe they feel like they don't need to do anything and
Yeah.
we'll lose enough in the process or.
I mean, what I'm hearing Frank is that, that we are going to be on an extremely fast glide path once the maps are introduced.
Yeah.
Here, you know, hearing to being on the floor in.
Get it done.
Very quick. And so even though we've had a, we've had a little bit of time here for session getting going, what I'm hearing is that it's going to happen. You know, once the maps hit, it's like, it's, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna hit, we're gonna hear it. The long hearing, move it, get it through calendars, be on the floor.
Yeah.
So, and, and if there is a bolt, I would expect it to be right before that bill hits the floor. That's what I would think. If there, if there is breaking quorum, then, then that, you know, and obviously they've taken steps. You know, there's these penalties and fines and other things associated with that, that are trying to be like, hey, you gotta stay here and do your job. I think politically it's not the best place to be, you know, and I think sort of like for, I think there's sort of a Texas stay, stay in the foxhole, do what you can do. If you don't like it, don't vote for it, you know, but I, I, I'm not sure that those other two movements really were a net benefit. But again, if, 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 you know, if someone who's going to be speaker or thinks he's going to be speaker in Jeffries is, is paying for your hotel room and, you know, I, I, I suspect that that, so that's part of, that's probably the most interesting thing really happening, you know? We've got other things we care about. I have talked with some of my friends like, what if we weren't doing redistricting? Would there be enough reason for us to, you know, I mean, the floods are the floods, but of course.
I think honestly, I don't, honestly, I think they, they, the floods, the floods came in that bef, afterwards, right?
That's right. That's right.
It came afterwards and so they, they, they put it in there. But honestly, with what happened last session with THC, you almost had to have some
Right.
A, a, a new resolution to this whole issue that, that, I mean, Dan Patrick has not wavered.
No.
He has not wavered in a one inch.
That press conference where he laid out where he was, I, I thought was just vintage Dan Patrick.
Vintage Dan Patrick.
So you had it was like, you're not going to have to wait for me to understand exactly where I am. Here's what the governor told me, uh, you know? So it was, it was, and I, and I will tell you, that's another one that I'm like, you know, there's been some conversations that, you know, the house is going to end up in a different place than they in that first time. So, you know, we're, we're now in the point where, you know, I think, I think we are in a place where the outright ban bill, we already know is not something that Abbott supports. I think it was something that in the specter of school finance, like, hey, I need you, I need your vote on this.
Right.
So that you get the school finance bill you want. Well, that, that's not there anymore.
Right.
So that's another one that I'm really sort of interested to see. I'm not, you know, I'm not involved in it. You know, I know you've got a lot of history with it.
Yeah.
But I would just say that ultimately, you know, show me what happens on the house floor, who says what, and what kind of bill comes out. And that's another one that could easily extend into another session.
Yeah, I agree. I, I do think that one will go to another session. It's just with all those, with all those, the three big ones, I mean, there's a lot of other, there's a lot of other issues, but I mean, those are not getting a lot of play. There, there, I see some, some work on that and they're trying to get some of those things done, but those big three, you know, it's kind of hard to hold, like you said, hold other issues hostage. You could do that last session. But now we're in a special where you're not going to hold disaster preparedness hostage. I mean, at least not publicly. Uh, redistricting.
I mean, I think, I mean, that one of the things about disaster preparedness is, I think you could just, I mean, is anyone going to tell Nim Kidd to not do something he thinks should be done right now?
No. No.
I mean, so I think there's an element of this of like, we'll, we'll have hearings, we'll do stuff, but go do it. Go, go, go do what you need to do. And if we have to make it, if we have to, you know, if we have to figure it out in, in, you know, with some budget execution, I can't see anybody. I, I mean, it's an extraordinarily, you know, I always say this about Texas. I mean, if it's in the Bible, we have it here. Floods, drought, locusts, right? The whole bit.
The whole bit.
The whole bit.
Screw worm.
Yeah. I mean, we just have it. And, and this was, you know, it's not the first time it's happened in the Hill Country, unfortunately. And, but it's extraordinarily, extraordinarily tragic and particularly the young people. And, and, and those young campers, that's just hard to get your, hard to get your arms around and your mind around because of the, of the, of the tragedy. But I, I, I'm with you. I, I think it, you know, I, I think whatever ends up happening there, that that would be a bipartisan, bipartisan effort to do what needs to be done. And, you know, you probably have been around when it comes to, when it comes to Katrina and Rita, when it comes to the natural disasters that Texas has, you know, there are some parts of this that we learn good lessons from and that we implement. And there are certain things that just happen far enough away from each other that, you know, something, you know, something rises 30 feet in the middle of the night is going to be a disaster.
A natural disaster.
And I'm, I'm, I'm not here to say that nothing, you know, I'm not here to, you know, declaratively say that a better job can't be done.
Yeah.
But I'm here to say that, you know, that was a terrible flood that had a terrible result. I hope we can, I hope our state can do better and that other communities can learn from it.
A hundred percent. And, you know, when you talk to the members who represent that area, they say the same thing. You know, I was really interested to find out, you know, how they, how they saw, you know, things rolling out with the hearing and, you know, was there going to be some big changes or was there going to be finger pointing and all that? I, I haven't seen that and I did not get that impression from any of the members that, that have that in their district, have the Kirk County area in their district. They felt like, you know, it was a terrible disaster that probably there's almost impossible to have prepared for.
Right.
I mean, what are you going to do? 30 feet of water? And there were other things that were sort of upstream that occurred that you could not have prepared for. There are some pretty, some I would call basic measures that they're looking at. But there's, there's really not, other than just, just unbelievable sorrow for the loss of, loss of life. There's, the fix is not, it's not rocket science, you know?
No, I mean, you, you don't, I, I know this is not a productively, necessarily productive thing to say, but you know, if that had happened at two in the afternoon rather than two in the morning.
Right.
You know, you, you, the loss of life would have been vastly smaller, right?
Yeah.
You know, probably those kiddos would have been running around on July 4th instead of being in their camp.
Right.
And we would have had some understanding of, you know, a little bit, people would have had their phones in their pockets if there were alerts. By the way, my, my daughter's gone to, you know, camp in the Hill Country for several years. Can't get a cell phone service. You can't get, can't get a signal out there. I mean, I don't, I don't say that in any sort of cavalier way. I mean, like you're in a little bit of a dead z, zed zone around Hunt, Texas. And so, you know, I, I, I think we have an extraordinarily capable Department of Emergency Management. Those people are good people. The first responders of our, of our state are good people. And when, when we have the character of this state tested as it has been in hurricanes, that it has been in floods, you know, I think it's the generosity here has always, has always surprised me and has, or maybe it shouldn't, but it has always been there. Let's make it better. If there's resources that can do to help prevent this, let's do it. And I, and I, I suspect that you want serious minded, thoughtful lawmakers. There will be some inevitable shoulda, woulda, coulda moments, right? And I think we're seeing that at the county level. And I'm sure the national press kind of loves to take some shots at Texas, no matter what happens.
Right.
But in this case, you know, that won't be productive. The productive part will be to. The productive part will be to remember the people solemnly and then to learn from it and move on.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent. I, I think that's the one issue, um, that's just unfortunately became part of, uh. A, a part of what Texas is dealing with that will resolve itself in a, probably the most positive way. Um, I do think we'll probably not complete some of the other things in this next two and a half weeks. Just because there's just too many moving parts. Um, I don't, I, I agree with you. I don't think that the T H C issue necessarily and the redistricting issue play off of each other. But, um, but there are some very angry people on. I know on the T H C side that wants something done about the stuff that's happening, that, that kids are getting a hold of. And there are bad players out there and they're trying to resolve that problem. The problem is, is gonna be you've got a, you know, you have, you could have nothing and you can have something. And there's no, there's no gray area in there. So I think you're gonna end up.
If you're Dan Patrick, you know, I think he said this during his press conference. It's like, hey, I, I watch this movie with property taxes. And I'm not, I'm not moving. I don't think the politics is exactly the same, right? I don't think it's the same, but I don't think that that's gonna stop Dan Patrick from playing his hand the way he thinks he's gonna play it. And that is, I'm not moving, right?
It's worked for him.
It has, it has, it has worked for him.
Yeah.
Um, and, and so in that regard, you know, I do think that there is some. I mean, we're, you know, do you get half a loaf of bread and no loaf at all? Do you come back here and, and talk about it again? Um.
Well, we'll say that I just saw.
End up, you know, does the governor end up vetoing a bill substantially? I mean, there's a lot of different ways I think this could play out.
Yeah.
But to me, lock me in a closet, show me what the house passes and I'll show you where the politics is. Because that's where they just gonna, that's where this is gonna find out.
That's where it's at. A hundred percent. And, you know, the, and I just saw actually on my way over here that, um. I guess Rand Paul pulled the banned language out of the appropriations, the, the appropriations bill federally. Which, um, and, and Trump's kinda weighing in on that a little bit.
Okay.
He's been sort of back, he's been staying in the background a little on that issue. He's just sort of seeing where it's going. So I don't know how that plays into, I know that Dan Patrick's a very big part of the Trump administration. You know, he's heading up his, uh, Religious Freedom, uh, uh, Commission.
Yep.
And, um, so I don't know how that plays into, um, maybe a compromise that comes up later on, but.
And it's a really interesting thing to, to see, you know, I always say that, you know, one in every twelve Americans is a Texan. And so, you know, what happens here can set a national trend almost overnight. Um, so, and then you put sort of the outsized influence that Republicans have in Texas and then multiply that versus Washington. Um, so that's gonna be interesting to see, you know, one of the things that I think was interesting is, you know, there was probably, you know, early on. Kind of an effort to sort of, um, sort of kneecap data centers. You know, these giant data centers that are processing all of our, uh, all of your chat G P T queries and all of your J M I and other requests. And then kind of in one fell swoop, the administration got up there and said, hey, we don't want these data centers being built in China. We want them being built here in the U S. And the politics of that, you know, I wish I could have bought a stock in some, in some of the. Built data centers in, in Texas. And what happened was the politics changed because the president said, this is what we wanna do. I think a lot of, of questions were still asked, uh, about how exactly we're gonna do it because we've got grid concerns here. But when Trump moves, it can move the needle pretty quickly. And so I, I'm sort of interested, that's a, that's a real X factor Frank. If Trump weighs in on T H C. What does that mean for the politics here? Really, really interesting question.
I think it moves a lot of people.
I do too.
Um, I, I don't think if he doesn't really weigh in and if, if there isn't a, a, a bat signal from Trump.
Mm-hmm.
To Dan Patrick, I think he doesn't move at all.
No, no, that's, that's, that's right.
Clear.
No, I, I, and that's right. I mean, my question is, you know, um. On the other hand, you know, if he weighs in in a way that's a little closer to Trump, does that move house members and other people? I mean, it's just, it's, it's just a heck of an interesting question. I've really been around, I've watched, you know, President Bush, you know. But, you know, Trump has a, you know, Trump has the ability when he wants to, you know. To say, here's where I'm headed and why in a way that, um, you know, Republicans are, are like, alright, let's do this. Right? And so I, I really, you know, normally, you, you know, sort of here trying to move and read the tea leaves. But this is an, a session in which Washington and Washington politics is just as important as Austin politics.
It is. And the more wins that Trump has with, uh, I mean, these trade, these trade deals that he's just knocking out of the park. Like every three, four days, you know, another big one. And, you know, um, it just gives him that much more influence to say, you know what? He's on the right track. We need to be followed, you know?
Yeah.
I think he's building, it, it looks like, now you tell me because you're, you, you really understand this much better than I do. But it looks like you had, after the election, he stayed really firm, his numbers were really firm for a long time. And then when things got a little choppy, you know, when he did all, he was, he was raising tariffs. And there was so much going on with the different, with the wars, the Ukraine and, and Israel and everything going on. Um, that his numbers started to dip. But it looks like because, you know, and he, he weathered it.
Yeah.
He just, he just stuck it out and now it seems like he's sort of making that curve back up to, uh.
I mean, one of the things that I think I'm sort of, and I, and I know that, I know Texans can kinda roll their eyes at this. But like, I'm always a big fan of the Wayne Gretzky lines, you know, skate to where the puck's gonna be, right? And I look at the Democratic Party and I'm saying like, where's the puck going in the Democratic Party?
I don't understand.
And honestly, I look at the guy running for mayor of New York, I look at some of the people that are on the more progressive end. And I look at the Wall Street Journal article that Democrats are polling at their worst position in three decades. So I, I don't really know necessarily, I mean, I think there's plenty of criticism of President Trump, right?
Sure.
Um, and there's gonna be plenty of shots of, plenty of shots at the president, you know, some of them, you know. Some of them more valid than others. I just don't know that, and in an off year election with a president in power. Just saying like, I'm not for that, you know, I think there's an element to which voters are like, okay, like, am I gonna give? You know, Democrats a little more power in Congress, right? I'm, I'm not saying that you've gotta articulate a broad agenda. But I, I sort of look at like, where are the Dems as from a kind of an intellectual standpoint, a messaging standpoint, you know, where are they headed?
Yeah.
And, and not only that, maybe who's their messenger? I mean, people kinda forget this, you know, in January of twenty twenty seven. Both parties will start a presidential election, right? I'm not saying, right? So you'll have people, you'll have people actually announce. You know, or certainly create exploratory committees and other things in that time.
Movement begins, yeah.
Right. And so, you know, the shiny object that is national politics will all of a sudden move to the campaign trail. I'm not really sure, like, maybe this president's fully comfortable necessarily with the idea, but, you know, that is what, that is where we're headed as, as a country. And so, you know, I'm interested in like, you know, who runs for governor? What do they say? You know, who runs for, you know, who runs for U S Senate, not just here, but across the country? What are Democrats excited about? Are they excited about the guy in New York who wants to raise taxes and create grocery stores?
I was gonna ask you this question, cause I, I, this, this comes up a lot and I have this conversation a lot. And I honestly don't know the answer, you know, I, I sit there and I watch what's going on and I know the theater that, what, what, what the Democrats have been doing. I mean, you know, political theater can work, but I feel like it's now beyond, uh. I, I don't think it's working. And I, and at least for me, I look at it and I'm thinking, what are they gaining? By going down this road and moving towards a more, you know, moving towards, uh, Mamdammy. And then there's another guy in Min, in, uh, I believe Minneapolis, I, I, he's in Minnesota. Um, that's being, uh, supported by, uh, Ilhan Omar, another democratic socialist. You have this group really starting to gain traction amongst, you know, in these certain areas. But I'm thinking nationally, I don't understand why the Democrat Party as a whole hasn't tried to move away faster. And, you know, things like all the anti-Semitic, uh, stuff that's going on at the universities.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, what is, what's going on with the, with party?
I will tell you that, um, Texas is a super interesting state. I, I, I think for the longest time, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring up my good late friend Harold Cook. And I don't know if you really got to know Harold or not.
I did know.
Harold's not with us anymore, but I used to do, I used to be, do a decent amount of kind of, kind of a, a little give and take with Harold. And we, we worked together on a show that's here in Austin on Spectrum News, um, and.
And you still do the Spectrum News.
I still do that, yeah. I still do some anal, I do analysis on, on that. And I did it for years with Harold. And, and Harold was kind of your Clinton Democrat kinda guy. He probably liked guns more than most Republicans and things like that.
Yeah.
But I, I think one of the things that's happened was that when we would go and we would speak to the, a realtors group or whatever. We would kind of talk about the future of Texas politics, there'd always be a question like, when do we, when do Democrats, when do they win a statewide election? Right? And, you know, for the longest time, I think there was just this argument. And at one point, I kinda think I kinda bought into it. I'm like, well, you know, it's, you know, seventy percent of all first graders at Dallas Independent School District. Are Hispanic and, you know, this number of, you know, this, this time and this thing and this and that. And then all of a sudden you look and you say to yourself, wait a minute. Young voters, particularly young men and young minority voters, including the fastest growing demographic in the state Hispanics.
Yeah.
Vote for Trump in record numbers, all of your assumptions of what I call the demography is destiny. You know, which is kind of what you get, some version of that answer you get from most Democrats. Oh, if you just wait long enough and you see this and, you know, this number of people, you know, da, da, da. All of a sudden, all that is thrown out. All of a sudden, just being a younger voter doesn't mean necessarily you're gonna vote Democratic. Just being a Hispanic voter doesn't mean you vote like your parents did or your grandparents did. Um, so once that calculus is thrown out, Katie bar the door. I'm not really sure you really know an element of when Texas will be competitive. I mean, it does sort of beg the question. It's a big state, you know, very expensive state to advertise in.
Yeah.
You know, thirty-three and a half million people. Why do Texas Democrats have the longest losing streak of any state in the country? In the country, right? Um, and so, you know, and then you say to yourself, well, you know, this candidate or that race or this candidate or that thing. So I always just feel like that, you know, this is one of those things where, um, the party appears to have moved to the left. I think it's fair to say then Republicans have probably moved some to the right, right? Um, but there is just an element here of something that I wonder if the core constituency of young voters. Um, of voters, you know, I, I just, I'm, I'm sort of interested to sort of watch that and see how it plays out.
Yeah.
After this last cycle, I'm not sure if, and I, I was, I was never a big fan of you just wait long enough and Texas becomes a blue state. You know, Texas will be a purple state before it's a blue state.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, ostensibly now Republicans, I think at least have a mathematical argument for the fact that, you know. They're, they're, they're gonna be in charge for the foreseeable future, not overwhelmingly so, right? But I'm saying that there is an element, if you look at this last cycle, let's just say that number, the Trump numbers aren't as good in South Texas. They were still vastly better than they've been before. So all this kind of has to play out, you know, the real question is, um. You know, politics can move quickly. You just kinda have to watch who the messenger is and what, and what message they're bringing.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. I mean, it makes all the difference of the world and doesn't really matter, like, I, I think, I, I like your analogy of a snapshot versus a movie. Uh, it, a hundred percent, it doesn't, it, you can't look at anything in a snapshot.
Right.
I, I think, um, what happened with the Republican Party is they moved in both directions. With Trump is they moved a little, they're a little more right and, and they moved towards the center.
Yeah.
And they captured people that were sort of felt like they'd been, you know, left out in the cold, right?
No question.
The, the Democratic Party just moved left.
Yeah.
And they, so they, they lost those people that were sort of on the edge in the center. And they may have picked up some new people that were, had, had been motivated, but not motivated to go vote, right? It's always about getting them to actually go to vote. Um, and, um, I, I'll tell you an interesting story. I kind of saw this, um, I guess I, I could say I kinda saw this coming. In two thousand and ten, when, uh, I believe it was two thousand and ten, Perry was running, uh, his, it was, it was a little. Election against, uh, Tony Sanchez.
So that was two thousand and two. He ran in twenty ten against Kay Hutchinson in the primary.
Primary, sorry. It was the primary. Sorry. That was, so it was the primary. I did a poll of all Hispanic voters. I wanted to find out, this is two thousand and ten.
Yeah.
And I wanted to find out, I had, I'd started this organization of Latino elected officials from around the country. That, both Republican and Democrat. And, um, we talked about, we went to find out, okay, where, where are our Texas voters?
Right.
You know, Latino voters. And the poll was fascinating because it said things like, the most important things were. You know, family, patriotism, work. It was all of those things that, you know, every conservative talks about. I mean, it's just, it's, it's, it's sort of the basic foundation of Texans, right? And all of those other social issues were way, way, way down at the bottom. And even things like, at the time, we used J Lo as an example.
Yeah.
Do you care what J Lo thinks? I, I forget how we asked the question. Do you care what the celebrities think? And, um, they love celebrity, but they could care less what they said.
Right.
So using a celebrity to try to come out and change your vote didn't work. But those numbers were insane and you could see that if, you know, given the right language, the right message and the right messenger. You could turn those voters, which is what I was trying to help do, is I was trying to help. And I don't think anybody was really all that interested in doing that back then. And it was just sort of like a, well, things are good the way they are, to your point about the snapshot, like, we're good. And, but then you move forward now, twenty, you know, god, twenty years later. And, yeah, those Latino voters, South Texas, moving up, are, are voting differently. Maybe not every time and they'll vote across the board, but they are definitely moved, you know, right of center. Uh, because, because of, I think, um.
You know, Texas has, I think, some, some specific messages to Texas that, um, I'm, I'll tell you a story. There was a, uh, I'll kinda keep the, the name out of it, but there was a lawmaker, um, and Trump did well in his district. Okay, a Democrat.
Okay, this is Texas member?
Texas member, yeah. And I called him and I said, uh, what is going on? What, what, what is going on? I told him, he actually wasn't a hundred percent sure what Trump's numbers were in his district. So he won reelection, but Trump had done well in his district. And I said, just tell it to me like I'm a golden retriever, like, explain it to me. And he was like, a couple of things. Number one, everybody in my district has a cousin, brother, friend that works for ICE. And you cannot demonize the people who are, I mean, you, you can say the border security policy is this or that. But you can't say the people doing the job are bad people. And, and he basically said kind of like the, the tight family structure is one in which, hey, that doesn't make sense. That person's a good person. That person's part of my family or part of my friend group, or I play poker with, or I go to church with. I thought that was super interesting. I didn't have that. I didn't really necessarily have that on my bingo card.
Yeah.
And the other one, and the way he said it, I'll never forget it. He goes, and the other one is, there's lots of new trucks in my district. And I said, there's lots of new trucks in your district. And he is like, there's a lot of people working on a frac site.
Oh.
Who were, didn't, maybe graduated from high school and they're, and they're, and they're welding. And they're making a lot of money and they're buying new trucks, which I thought was such a great, an interesting way. Such an interesting way to do it, you know? And you forget sometimes that the entire nature of our geopolitical power. And petrochemical politics really depended upon the fact that. We were able to generate a lot more energy through fracking in the state of Texas. And it not only has created a lot of wealth at the high ends, it's created a lot of people who land, you probably couldn't give away a few years ago, Frank. But a lot of people, you know, who are working in the, in the, you know, working in the Eagle Ford, you know, working out in the Permian. Um, working all across Texas, you know, some of that, there's some, there's some new trucks out there. And I thought that was interesting. That was a few years ago, but I think it sort of was consistent to the fact that, you know. Texas is still a state that's gonna rely on our, on our oil and gas industry, right? As you well know, it's a big part, when you talk about having surpluses, right? We're talking about, I always say Texas floats on a sea of sales tax, right? So sixty-eight, sixty-nine percent of our revenue comes from sales tax, but that severance tax is a big deal. And we will feel it when oil and gas prices fall. But, you know, we have a unique culture here. And I think that Texas Republicans, that being said, you know, have a very. have a very, maybe once in a generation opportunity to, and I said this, you know, I've I have some great friends in the Rio Grande Valley, and for a long time, the Democrats did take it for granted, right?
Right.
What a, what a great opportunity for both parties to go down to uh, you know, to a McAllen, to a Cameron County, you know, and say, we want to compete for your vote. We want to talk to you about what this XYZ party stands for, have a local candidate for sheriff down there in some of these places, you know?
Yeah.
I think all of that political competition, I think political competition overall is is good. Um, and I think that to the extent to which South Texas becomes a battleground, maybe larger areas that, you know, and I would say this for suburban areas. I think the idea that I want to see people can be, compete. Um, because I think ultimately, it's it's good for body politics and I may have my own ideas on who I think should win, but I think overall competition in that regard is healthy.
I think it's great. I I I'm gonna let it end on that point because I think that's a great point to make. And I think um, it at the end of the day, what's what what's great for the, you know, the voter is what needs to happen. It's what they need in their life. And so that competition is is good for for, like you said, the body politic. I would uh, love to have you come back again for part two. This is fascinating. I love to listen to you, your, your, you know, your background and and the uh, your analysis. And um, maybe we can pick back up in a couple of weeks and do this again.
Well, I I really appreciated it. Appreciate the opportunity to visit with you and um, and so lots of members of my team speak very highly of you, you know, and have worked with you, Frank. So, you know, that's that. I'm wishing the best of luck and let me know when I can come back.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much, Ted.